That's just master planning, that's what we do. We've already done the water plant, the water plant's already got a master plan. And it's up on the web? I don't even know, is it part of their best? I don't remember.
I don't think so because it changed when we started the impact fee.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, yeah.
I don't think it got, the impact fee maps are up there now.
And part of what, like the impact fee stuff, let's say the impact fee just says, you're gonna put in a new sewer plant that's this size and here's the cost. It doesn't say where, or how, or, you know, it doesn't have any, you know, it's the how that's not in there, it's just the cost. So, that's again where, you know, piggybacking what you said, it makes sense that some of the impact fee people, I don't wanna draft everybody again, but anybody that would like to do it, it makes sense that you're involved in, you know, like what we need there to also be involved in, how we get there, right? To me that makes sense.
More than happy to do it.
Thanks, Derek. Okay.
Danny left, but he held here.
Danny, yeah, I thought I heard Danny say that. Yeah, Danny, I thought Danny did that too. Okay, so that's number 10, so now we get up to 11. Discussion of end of year financial review, so Dan, that's you.
Let me just start out by saying that we've been trying to go after these things for quite some time. The law's pretty clear. I'll read it to you if you'd like. Section 102.009, after final approval of the budget, the governing body may spend in the municipal funds only in strict accordance with the budget except in an emergency. So if that's not plain English enough, what it really means is you can't go over budget without amending your budget. And you can only amend your budget by coming in front of an open forum and explaining why you're amending your budget. Makes sense? The problem we have here is they were over budget in a whole number of line items. The one I kept picking on was legal fees because, you know, it's driving me crazy, they were using a lawyer for a whole bunch of things, and we won't tell the council nor the people what those things are. So that's the one that I've been picking on for quite some time.
I signed up to speak on that behalf, Linda.
Yes, he did. I don't know when you.
I was on the wall.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, it's just under the law part, so Clint, are you familiar with the, I sued Mark Vargas? So, Ed, are you?
Yeah, actually, actually, let me rephrase it, I'm familiar with the, I sued Mark Vargas as the mayor of Lakewood.
No, so, and I have all the documents and all that stuff, so I'm, and this is all public knowledge, and there's stuff I can say and I can't say and all that stuff. I sued Mark Vargas as a resident, as an individual, and a neighbor. There was nothing city-specific. They, then the city attorney came back to me, amended the documents on their part, saying Mayor Mark Vargas and all that stuff.
Which attorney?
Uh, well, the one that made the changes was Andy Masur. Is that part of the city attorney?
That's the town attorney, yeah.
So, so he builds the city for those fees, right? For his fees?
My understanding was Andy was made aware of it, but it was TML that was actually.
Well, TML was the one that actually offered the money and all that stuff. Andy was the one that was going back and forth with the modifications and all that stuff.
So, before we get going real far here, this is the case that you pulled back and you're no longer?
Well, so this is the case that I dropped because I sued Mark Vargas. I did not sue the City of Lakewood Village. So, now, with this whole deal, what I was offered, I was, and a lot of people would have taken the money that I was offering and all that stuff. I denied the money because this is not a City of Lakewood Village deal. So, but with that, there was a gag order, with that money, the city, and what Andy amended and all that stuff was that, as long as I would drop my case against him and drop all the, well, and sign a gag order saying I cannot say anything about this, that the TML would pay me money. So when I'm, so when you look at our budget and all that stuff, legal fees and all that stuff, and yeah, part of it's, him calling people liars and all that stuff in the middle of the city council, which we need to watch out, he did it again last week, and all that stuff, even after he was in negotiations to pay me to not say, you know, to keep this under the carpet and all that stuff, but, I, so was all city council, Gary, you were familiar with this lawsuit?
Yeah.
So, Dan, were you told about this lawsuit?
You know, the funny thing is, I heard it from you when you got offered a settlement, and I've been asking from day one, what the hell are we dealing with our legal fees, why are we paying a lawyer? And then you came to me personally, and this, we've never been informed.
Which I turned down, I turned down an amount of money and all that stuff, but I think most people wouldn't because, I did not want to sit here and be gagged and not be able to say.
Would you like to go to the podium? I mean, this is your three.
I'm a very loud talker, so it's not three minutes, that's for the.
Let me say, do you wanna know when I learned it? I learned of it in an executive session. Dan has not attended every executive session. So, it wouldn't surprise me that he hadn't heard of it when the rest of us did.
But you're okay with the city paying fees to handle personal lawsuits?
TML, our insurance company.
Well, so, so I'm a very large business and all that stuff. So, and I understand with my insurance premiums and all that stuff, whenever I settle a case and all that stuff, my premiums go up. So, this is one of those things that, you can say, yeah, they're offering this, but they're offering that, but at the end of the day.
That's what I have is public comments. So we have, we have two problems. Number one, Dan, hold on, hold on. You asked to speak during public comments, right, Linda, it's a blue card.
Yeah, so what I'm asking council is, is the council okay with the city spending money to handle personal lawsuits on behalf of actions that the?
Are you done with your public comments? You can't, we can't respond to public comments, you know, you get to make your public comments, or you just.
No, the public comment is at the very first of it. That's at the very, when you sign, when you sign up on this, it's not a three minute, and you can engage, you can engage council members. If you come in the very first and speak under three minutes, you can't, you can't ask questions. If you're asking specific, you can engage.
So, Dan, I'm the presiding officer, don't tell me to hold off.
We just did this.
This is public comments, are you done with your public comments? That's all I'm asking for, are you done? Because they can't respond to public comments. Are you done?
Linda, is this public comment? Is what I signed the form just now and all that stuff, was that stated as a public comment?
The speaker rules are on the desk.
It's right on the desk, you get, you get your three minutes, you can either do it beginning, or you can do it at that, just like Jeff did. When Jeff talked, he filled out a speaker card and asked to talk to a bartender.
I did, I did that at the very first, did I not turn that into you, Linda?
So that's why we're giving you the opportunity to talk now for your public comments.
And we engaged in Jeff.
Okay, so I, so I guess I can't ask if the council's all right with that. So, I would be very surprised if the council would be.
Are you done with pub, okay, so I'm assuming you're done.
Yes, sir.
Now, Dan, it's back to you on the, your issue.
So we have, we have two problems on that one line item, and I was planning on going through the rest of them, but let me start with the legal fees.
Oh, let me ask, which line item here, so?
So if you scroll down, pass the income and go through the expenses. You'll start seeing, it actually go up just a little bit. So you see it says professional services.
We're talking about this here, okay, okay.
So we don't have any litigation going on currently, and yet we spent $6,000. We have a budget of $20,000 and yet we spent 35. So in total, we have budget 20, we spent 41. Again, remind you, the law states, as clear as can be, 102.009, after final approval of the budget, the governing body may spend in the municipal funds only in strict compliance with the budget. If you go through the expenses, guys, for four months I've been asking, what is going on here? We haven't published financials. We haven't told anybody, we've just continued to write checks. So the attorney fee is one example, that's the one I was honing in on, trying to figure out what is it that our attorney is doing? And I haven't been able to get the answer, I think the answer I got from the mayor was go Google it if you wanna know what's going on. If you scroll down here, and we can go line by line, you can take professional services, budget was 78,000. The council took it upon themselves and the mayor to spend 101. You keep going down, you'll see one by one, one by one, you'll see about 40 items, then we overspent our budget. Now, there's clear ways to solve this, right? You have budget work jobs, you set a good budget, as the years progress and you run out of money, you call a meeting, like we're having here, and we go through these lines and you say, hey, I need to spend more with the attorney because of such and such. You vote to do it, you vote not to do it. What we have here is we have reckless spending. What we have here is we have a law, we either have a lack of controls on the financial side, where people are writing checks and they don't know they've gone over budget, or we have a blatant disregard for the law and the budget at hand. There is no middle ground here, it's one of the two, and I think both options are very, very concerning. I'll open it up for anyone who wants to discuss.
What, obviously, I have my own view of the financials, do you, can I put out my interpretation?
Sure.
Be interested in seeing it. So, one of the things that I would say, and let me, let me preface this by saying, if you have a better idea, listen.
All right, just follow the law, I think that'd be easier.
So for instance, one of the issues is, these numbers are not audited. We haven't audited the numbers, so what happens when we do the audit is, I do the audit first, before the auditors arrive, the auditors are coming in November. So, we haven't gone through, I have not gone through and done the audit. Now, what do I do when I do the audit? I go through all the expense lines and make sure that there's 12 coserved bills in there. There's not 14. Because these was here, these numbers here are expenditures, they're not expenses. Which means, we budget based on 12 sublet bills, 12 coserved bills. Now, when you look at that number up there, when it gets to expenses, how many are in there? Well, it depends. We got our bill last year on September 15th, did Linda pay that on October 3rd? If she did, then even though it's from September, it shows up there in here, we've now got 13 of them in there. Now, a lot of what I do when I do the audit is I look at the numbers and, and we look at them and say, look, Linda doesn't know what a McMuffin valve is. She doesn't know what that is, she's looking at an invoice and it says McMuffin valve. Now, the question is, what is that? Is that CapEx? Is that a water repair? Is that a sewer repair? Is it inventory? So, part of what we do before the auditor gets here is we go through all of those lines, and we make sure that everything is coded properly. Now, for instance, if you look at our actual performance, and again, this is un-audited, but here it is, you look at our revenues, well, we have what are called operating revenues, these are the revenues that are continuous from year to year.
We're not talking revenue.
You don't have weird stuff.
We're talking expenditures here.
Okay, so scroll down, that's cool, let's go down to expenditures, so if you scroll down to expenditures.
There's the labels.
Go up, go up to the label. So here's the issue, so we spent $41,795 in expenditures last year. Expenditures. Exactly right, we wrote checks totaling $41,795, that's a true fact. Now, however, 3907 of it, almost $4,000, was the MDD. They reimbursed us for that. But the auditor doesn't allow us to subtract it. He makes us do the gross amount.
Let's clarify what that is, so we were doing something illegal.
No, we weren't.
And we were taking?
No, we weren't. Hey, Dan, Dan, I'm talking now, I like to talk. No, I'm not, you talk now, you got me.
Mark, explain the 3907.
3907 was a legal opinion the MDD asked for. Now, if legal bills that come in, the city pays. So, when the bill comes in, the city pays it, so they reimbursed the city. Now, our auditor, there's two ways you can do a reimbursement. You can either take a 10 and then you get a 2, you can either take 10 and 2, and the net is 8, or you take the 10 and you subtract the 2, and you show an 8. The auditor doesn't like us to net them, he likes us to show both sides. So, we have 3907, which we got reimbursed for by the MDD. $1990 in legal fees we got reimbursed for by the utility fund. Because the impact fees are for the utility fund, impact fees. The attorney has to review all those orders, so the utility fund pays the city for that attorney bill. He's heard it goes like this. So, that's where that comes from, is they have to pay back the city. So that's 1990. Now, $10,664 is from the year 2016. It's from the previous year, our attorney bills with several month lag, he bills behind. So that's not from our year, that's from the prior year. That doesn't count against this year's budget. Our budget for this year is what we're gonna spend this year. Stuff from prior years, even if we pay it in this year, it doesn't count against this year's budget, it's from the prior year. So when you actually look at the amount of funds, that's why there's $6,000 there in litigation, Dan's exactly right. We don't have any litigation costs. From this year, that's from the prior year. That's one of the things the auditor's going to do, is he's going to adjust this. We've actually only spent $25,234 on legal bills in the current year. That's what we spent in the current year. That's the number that goes against this year's budget. Ready?
Okay, so, let's take your example there, right? Forget the 3907, which was a bunch of people trying to protect themselves from doing something illegal, okay, we'll let that go. But keep in mind, we have not corrected the illegal problem, it still exists.
Number two.
Number two, the 1990, so let's just assume that he's right, that it comes to utility fund, and we did impact fees with the utility fund. Wouldn't you have to have a budget for that 1990? And just so happens I'm looking at it and there's a zero there. So if you have the no budget on this side, or you have a no budget on that side, you still spent the money without having a budget, which is my whole point. The last point is the $10,664.
Yep.
I'm shocked I got a 20 as well, okay. If you're paying the bill in the current year,
Yes.
and you are appropriating the current year, okay, and you are working on a cash basis, in other words, you're not retroing your funds and correct the plan, okay? Then you're either, you're either right to put that in, but then you gotta include the ones from this year. Or you're wrong, and you can't include the ones from this year. But it doesn't matter because you're over either way.
So, when he gets the financials, he's gonna back that out.
If you're including, okay, so if we put that in the last year's budget, we were over last year's budget as well. Understand, no matter what way you flip the numbers and what.
We're talking about this year's numbers.
So, up until what day has Andy billed us? Has he billed us through August 31st of 2017? Because if he hasn't, then it's gonna go into October, which really should be going into this year's fiscal.
Okay, let me make it easier on you.
Why would we wait, hold on, why would we wait until the end of the fiscal year to do what I call a reclass? Which means you take it out of a month or a fiscal year and you put it where it's supposed to be. Why would you wait until the end of the year before the auditor comes to do that? You should be doing that as you're doing your financials every month.
I have no idea what you just said.
Well, I understand what she's saying.
The way that the auditor works, remember, this is the general fund. The general fund operates on a modified accrual basis. Which means, those expenses are from 2016. Now, if you looked at the thing that I gave the council, what does it say at the very top? It says what? It says general fund, and what's the word? Expenses. Expenses, not expenditures to expense. So, this is what the auditor is going to report on our financial statements.
But then, so then he's gonna add that to the 2016? I mean, yeah, he's gonna add that to the 2016 fiscal year.
Now, the 10664, look, he's, he does the audit at the end of it, he already knows that number. It's already been fixed in his audit report. He's doing the audit report. This is our expenditure list. He's already, when he shows up, he already has the bills. He's already made the adjustment. Those are the adjustments Linda has to make at the end. We are not working with audited numbers yet. They're not audited yet. When they're audited, this number will go away and be replaced with.
So you're waiting for the auditor to tell you to fix something instead of fixing it when you know it needs to be fixed?
There's nothing to fix, this is where we're at, we're at 25,234. We're $5,000 over. The year is done, it's finished.
No, you said he backed deals, we're still paying bills from earlier, so do we know what our current bills are?
You got four months to remember.
Yeah.
The last probably 30 or 60 days yet, he has it.
Who's he?
Andy, the attorney, we're speaking about attorneys.
Yes, Andy, it bills with about either a one to two month delay, that's correct, that's right, you're absolutely right.
So, in this number, even if we take out $15,000, $16,000,
Yep, yep.
and we're already at 25,
Yep.
he hasn't billed us for the last 30 to 60 days,
Correct.
so it's still going to add to that $25,000.
Yep, I think it is.
Plus another 60 to finish the year.
So, it's, that's right, so another, another 25, that's right, we're over.
So we're gonna be over.
We're all, we're in the next year, we, we were over.
Right, yeah.
So, what do you wanna do about it?
What, guys, we have, to the council, guys, we've got, we've got law to follow.
Okay, so let's.
Hold on, hold on, no, not let's. If you go through any one of those items, go through repairs, go through the sewer maintenance, go through those things, in the past, and in any other town, if you needed more money, you would come to the council before you spent it. But what you're doing here is you're spending at will.
You amend the budget.
You have to amend the budget, it's as clear cut as can be. And unfortunately, you know, for four months I've been trying to stop this, but you keep putting up June numbers. You never show July, you never show August, you never show September, until I put it in the thing and had her put it in. Why do we, why do we even have a budget, and can I do this, we voted on a budget with incorrect numbers. In prior years, you would, you would update the numbers as you went along, and by the time you approved the budget.
I put the numbers in the budget, the council wasn't willing to approve the budget.
When you add up these numbers.
So, council's going to jail, not you.
So, when you add up these numbers.
That's where the liability is, you put the liabilities back and all the liability to there.
Okay, you're out of your work, okay, just sit there, dominate council.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I'm getting all this. So Linda, if you just scroll to the bottom, or, so who has the? So we're $82,000 off, I think, or something like that?
Where are, no, that's the utility fund, what do you wanna? Scroll up to the, scroll up to the general fund.
So, this is the one she was looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, I calculated like 82,000 off.
Yeah.
Right?
At least, yeah.
So if you look at the total expense line, right, 4, I can't read it from here, but.
Yeah, it's 46, some of that stuff.
Right, versus the 378.
Right, some of that stuff makes sense, like the contingency fund and the casualty expense, it's the other stuff that we have.
Okay, but bottom line is, I think what I'm hearing is, we went over budget more than $80,000.
No, we didn't. No, we didn't, not at all, no way, no.
We went way, we went way over Andy.
So let me, Rita, let me, let me show you, okay, let me show you, click, scroll to my stuff.
Just talk to me about those numbers for a second, Mark.
Okay, there's, the problem is, all right, if you scroll up to the top, and you look at our revenues, scroll, click, go up to the utility fund. I'm sorry, you're right, keep going up, general fund. Okay, so, go up a little bit more, all right, a little bit, go up to the revenues. So, there's our basic operating revenues that we took in, a little bit more, click, you're almost there, okay. That's our operating revenues we took in, that's sales tax, property tax, usual stuff, 378. This is our operating revenues according to budget, was 367. We were, we were $11,000 higher. Now, scroll down, I'm just gonna go to it real quick. All right, scroll down, all right, now, we have some weirdness in here, we sold a lot for 108. We got a roof check for 27 grand to repair the roof. We turned around and had to expense it on the other side, the auditor wouldn't let us just endorse that to the roof company. He made us write down a $27,000 revenue and a $27,000 expense.
And where's the expense?
It's on the, it's further, it's coming down.
Okay.
Okay, now, so if you, if you looked at our, at our revenues, we were over, we had about $11,000 this year. We have some weird, we have $23,000 in liens that we got. Because we had a house that we had leaned for three years, that we brokered a sale, we got $23,000 coming back to the city from prior work we had done in other years. So these are all the one-off, this 6995 in miscellaneous income, $4,000 of that is the MDD reimbursing us, the auditor makes us count a reimbursement as revenue. That's why it's down here in this weirdness. This 1990 of transfer, that's this repayment of the utility fund. So, this is stuff that's non-reoccurring, this is the one of a kind weirdness. That's why it's not operating, operating income. So scroll down and click. Now, when you look at our operating expenses, okay, which excludes CapEx, and it excludes the weirdness which was the roof. We spent 212, this is actually what we spent, the budget was 201. So we were over by 10 on the expense side, for operating expenses. Now, if you look at that and say, well gee, why were we over? I mean, the reason why we were over on the revenue was mainly attributable to the building inspections. We get more building inspection revenue. That's why it was over on the revenue side. Well, we gotta pay the building inspector. They go hand in hand. That, that's why this is slightly over on the operating expenses. So if you look at our operating income, scroll down, click. Our operating income according to the city was 166,000, that's our operating income. Our operating income, according to the budget, was 165. From an operating standpoint, we are right on the money as far as the city fund goes from an operating standpoint. Now, we had some, now we have bond stuff.
You're taking a lot of liberal approach, Harry, I mean.
I'm just adding it up.
The individual lines are up.
So, so these are, this is exactly.
If you don't speak the truth.
What the auditor's going to do is, the auditor is gonna aggregate this, that's what the auditor does. You don't, you don't put out individual lines in our audit. The income statement is not gonna do this, that's not the way they do it. For comparability and consistency, he's going to report our operating income, this is what he's gonna do. He's gonna have a couple categories, maybe four, and this is gonna be our operating income. Now, the additional things that make the numbers different is, we have all those weird things on the revenue side, those, selling the lot for $108,000, right? So if you scroll down a little bit more, these, sorry, that, okay. This stuff up here, this professional stuff is already in there, it's just I couldn't, I couldn't move them up there. So, the only other oddities then, we have $173,000 we pay the bond payer, which comes out of this. This is the extra money that we use along with the nickel to make our bond payer. Then we had two weird events. We had a $27,000 casualty expense, this is the exact same number as the other side for the roof. That's the exact same number to cancel. And then, we had a litigation expense where the judge made us pay $40,000, we had unforeseen. That, that was a contingency, we didn't know what's gonna happen.
It was 80.
So, so we took 40,000 here. So, that was the oddity. So if you look at funds, if you look at the operating standpoint, the city lines are right on the money. They're right on the money. So, from the city standpoint, everything, everything looks good. Everything's there.
Small example, consulting education, you budgeted 500, you spent 2100. That's not where the line.
This line here is 4500 for professional development, we spent 5400, that's right.
5500.
That's right.
So you have a thousand dollar overs now. Maybe a thousand dollars doesn't sound like a lot, but when you only take in 200 and some thousand in property taxes, these little ones add up. The point is, each one of these.
Why, why are we over?
The point is, you can't go over according to the law, you need to agenda.
No, no, it doesn't have to be.
Yes, when you make a budget.
So let me, let me tell you, let me tell you what we used to do, so this is, because Dan, you weren't here then. So one of the things you can do in a budget, this is what we used to do when Ken Guthrie was here. So what we used to do was, when we made the budget, we would say, okay, at the start of the year, we have $400,000 in cash. We would put that on the top line of the budget. Then we put all of our revenues and say, funds available, and it would be all the money we have in the whole city. Then on the expense side, what we do is we'd say, here are our expenses. And here's the ending balance of all of our reserve money, we're gonna have on the expense side. And by doing that, under the law, it meant we could move money anywhere we wanted. Because as long as you didn't change the bottom number, if you put on the budget, there's 500,000 reserves, then under the law, you could move any of that money to any other line. So, that was the way to make sure that you never could ever outspend a line. You could move reserves anytime you wanted into any line. The problem when we did that for a couple of years was, we started growing our reserves. So then you started looking at things like, according to the general fund, we have a million dollars that's available on the budget line. Well, the council's like, wait, we're not gonna spend a million dollars, like, no, 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 700,000, that's our reserve fund. The council decided, you know, this is too confusing that we have a million dollars we can spend, and we have a million dollars on the other side, why don't we just put down the revenues we think we're gonna get? And put down the expenses we think we're gonna have? Don't put all of our reserve money in play. Don't do that. So, that's why we got away from doing that. But if we did that, then it, everything becomes trivial, you can make budget amendments anytime you want because you can always move money between lines. You can always do that, you can always move money.
If I did that, I should be able to kill me.
So, this is the, now, let's go to the utility fund, but, so here's the issue with the utility fund. Because I think this is really interesting. So on the utility fund, we, the utility fund goes on full accrual. And again, this has not been audited, so these numbers are going to check one. Utility fund is on full accrual at the end of the year, not modified accrual. So for instance, the auditor's gonna add the 11,000 of accounts receivable to the income. And so this is our income for the year on the utility fund, continuing operations, our income, this was the budget. So, we're in pretty good shape as far as that goes. Now, let me, let me just say, if you go back and you look at some of, the operating income number is pretty close because a lot of our operating stuff is very simple. Coserved is the same year to year. The alarm company is the same year to year, subling is the same year to year. Yes, they deviate a little bit, but that's why the operating side doesn't change very much. The operating side is the same. The operating side is same. Think of this operations of running city hall. It doesn't change year to year. We have weirdness that happens, these one-off events. So on the utility fund.
Which would be a hundred and eighty thousand over budget if we didn't sell a lot last month for a hundred thousand.
So this is the, this is the.
Weird occurrences would be.
This is the income that we took in.
We sold a lot.
The expenses, so scroll down. So here's our expenses that we have rolling through here, so keep scrolling down. Okay, I'm sorry.
Let's look at some of those.
So one of the expenses here is, for instance, is the engineer. So we spent thirty seven thousand dollars on the engineer in the utility fund. We budgeted thirty. This was the impact fees. We budgeted for thirty thousand for the impact fees. We, we, we actually spent, I think, twenty one or twenty two on the impact fees, but then we had other engineering that came up, where we had to pay things, like there were some plat reviews or other things that came up, which, which took us a little over the thirty.
So before you do that, you come for an amendment and you ask for the money. You don't spend it first. That's the.
Are you suggesting that the law requires every line item in a budget to follow that?
Yes, yes.
Excuse me, I'm asking.
Well, maybe, not that you should know it. You should know it. You're a council member and you're responsible for it. You should know this.
Right, right, let's, let's.
I'm not a student, don't mind.
This is not hard, right? At the final approval of the budget, the governing body may spend municipal funds only in strict compliance with the budget, except in emergency. Our budget is by line item. So by line item, you have to control it.
I could interpret that being a, a, a category rather than line by line. I guarantee you, if, if, if you are suggesting that we should.
Let's go with the.
Let me finish my, my question, please. If you're suggesting that on every item here that the council has to meet to approve a resolution, you are out of your mind.
You're out of your mind. So apparently I'm out of my mind. Let's take your logic for a minute. So let's take professional services contracts and let's forget all the different line items. Let's just forget it. Let's pretend that the law doesn't state what the law states, okay? We budgeted a hundred and six thousand dollars. We came in at one twenty one. Now, I'm not saying that one twenty one is wrong. I'm saying it's over budget. And what I'm saying is nobody ever came in to explain, what are we doing? There's been, there's never been, hey, I wanna spend this on the engineer. Okay, we thought it was gonna be this, but it's gonna be that. There's never been a chance to put the brakes on because four months prior, you stopped showing financials. Is that clear?
So on this, on this, let's, let's take a look at this.
I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure that I answered that question. Is that clear that we budgeted one oh six, we get all the details, and you came in at one twenty one, and we never asked for approval?
Well, again, that's your interpretation, well, well, the district attorney's.
Let's take a look at, let's take a look at this line. Brent, just, just.
You're the one that took the oath for our city.
I don't remember what oath I took.
Okay, let's.
You don't know what oath you took?
Brent, 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 just relax. Just sit down, relax, okay? Just relax. All right, so for instance, Dan, this forty thousand eight hundred is for the operator, right? The operator's salary.
So we overs, we budgeted thirty six.
How did, how did it get to forty thousand eight hundred?
It doesn't matter.